Good evening. It's 4:00 P. M. Welcome to the Albany City Council Work Session, Monday, September 30th, 2024. I call the meeting to order. Give me a roll call, please.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor.
Here.
Counselor Newton Azor.
Present.
Counselor Kopczynski.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Johnson II.
Here. Is there any business from the public? Online or otherwise?
No one signed up to speak.
No one signed up to speak? Thank you. Scheduled business for today is Housing Implementation Plan. Is a 30-minute presentation, housing policy and incentive strategies. And that will be conducted by Beth Freelander. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Counsel. I will quickly share my screen here and any luck. So I'm Beth Freelander. I work with the City of Albany as a planner. And I'm also joined today by Brendan Buckley with Johnson Economics, who's going to speak about the housing policy portion. And then also Kate Rogers with MIG is joining us online. And she's been tremendously helpful with the ADC policy or code amendments proposals. And I'm also joined by Anne Catlin, who will speak about the code amendments. So just kind of a quick context for why we're here today. So about a year ago last summer, Counsel adopted the Housing Implementation Plan, and that plan recognized that our housing stock in Albany doesn't meet the needs of all Albany residents, that there's a diverse housing needs, and that because our housing stock currently is mostly single detached housing and apartments, that there's a gap there for residents that need housing other than those two things. In particular, we have a need for smaller homes and single level homes, accessory dwelling units, the missing middle housing, so duplexes, triplexes, townhouses, etc., condos, housing that's affordable for households that are under our median income, and also accessible housing. And so now we're exploring the strategies that were recommended through the HIP and trying to move those towards implementation to advance these housing needs. And so I'll just quickly share some of the outreach summary, because we wanted to get input from the public to bring back to you on these housing strategies, because we know that that's an important part of how we consider these. So for our outreach methods, we did four focus groups focused on the Development Code Amendments and two housing policy focus groups. There were 42 participants in the Development Code focus groups. We actually added an additional focus group because there was more interest. So we wanted to make sure we could accommodate all of the input that people wanted to provide. And then there were 17 in the Housing Policy focus group. We also offered office hours, so people that weren't able to attend the focus groups or wanted to just come ask questions in a more informal setting had that ability to do so. And we had four people join us for those office hours. And we also provided a survey that was available online for about two and a half weeks on the same topics, on the code amendments and the policies. And we had 90 complete responses and 43 partial responses. And so specifically for the focus groups, we really heard from a cross-section of the community, people that are interacting with our housing system in a variety of different ways, from for-profit builders to nonprofit builders to social service agencies, residents, realtors. So really feel like we got a good representation of how people are looking at these issues from a variety of different perspectives. We don't have that information on the survey because we didn't collect what work people did or that sort of thing, but we do have some information about who our survey respondents were. So primarily, they were people that own their home and live in Albany. And there was also some that worked in Albany or included that as part of why they were invested in this issue. And then the majority lived in single detached homes and had not had difficulty finding housing that suited their needs in Albany. There was a variety of different age groups represented in the survey respondents, most of working age. And primarily, they were white or Caucasian residents that responded. And again, a cross-section of incomes, but leaning more towards people that are above our median income. So our survey responses do give us a good insight into what the concerns and priorities are, but of kind of more of a subset of our Albany residents, not necessarily a broader swath. So now I will turn it over to Brendan, who's going to talk about our housing policy proposals.
Hi, thank you. It's good to be back. You may remember early August, we met and talked about three different policy priorities that were identified through the HIP process last year. So these are the three that we were bringing forward at this time. We've done some extra research on it, and we now have extra feedback from the focus groups that we've had and the public engagement and are coming back with some recommendations for the council to consider. So the first was a construction excise tax. Just a very quick reminder, that's a one-time tax on new development, residential and/or commercial. And the funds for that go to affordable housing and developer incentives for affordable housing. Some types of construction are exempt, so things like public projects, projects that are already affordable housing and so on are exempted from that tax. And the community can choose where it wants to set that tax level. So that's part of the recommendation we have today. The residential CET can be 1% or less of the value of the permit, the building permit. And the commercial CET is unlimited. So this was a graph we presented last time that just showed some hypothetical revenue generation with the CET rates set at different levels. The three on the left show the tax level set at either 0.25%, 0.5 or 1%. And then the one on the right shows 1% tax on residential development and a 1.5% tax on commercial, which matches some of the examples that we found across the state. These are based on looking at the permit values in Albany over the last five years. And this is what the average annual income or to the CET fund would have been set at these different levels over those last, in each of those last five years. So it has some real revenue generating potential. Next slide. So what did we hear through public engagement? We've heard that there was general support for this. The focus groups understood that this is one of the few ways to build a dedicated fund that the city would control of affordable housing funds. The survey responses were a little bit more mixed, with 40% in favor, 44% opposed. The few, really just a handful of reservations we heard in the focus group was a few people wondering, you know, if this is an additional tax on development, some resistance to additional taxes, but generally the takeaway from both focus groups was broad support for this initiative. And the nonprofit agencies who are there explained why this can be such a valuable tool and that these incentives can really help make projects feasible. So the recommendation coming out of this analysis is a CET set at 1% on residential development and 1.5% on commercial and industrial development. Again, this is matching some of the peer cities that we looked at. We recommend that it be applied to projects valued over $50,000 so that you're not catching some lower value projects, you know, renovations and things like that, that folks wouldn't necessarily be expecting to be taxed on. There's a recommendation that the Community Development Commission helps to administer the program and make recommendations to counsel on how it would be advocated and which applications might be considered for funding. And the recommended parameters are that there would be a requirement that the projects remain affordable for 60 years and for residents earning no more than 80% of the area median income or less. Certainly, different projects could try to set a deeper affordability level and may therefore be considered for additional help or incentives coming out of this fund. So that's the recommendation on the CET. Next slide. The next policy that was under discussion was tax abatements.
Brendan, can we pause for a moment?
Yes.
To hear if there's any input or reflections or direction from the council?
Just. Just one comment. I'm inferring, and maybe I didn't read it quite close enough, a developer could build a project, have, say, 1.5% CET, and then turn around and apply for funding from that revolving fund to develop some low-income housing?
So in the packet, there was a list of exemptions. We don't have the full list of exemptions on the slide, the previous slide, Beth. But affordable housing developments would already be exempt from paying the tax, but it's possible that there would be a recommendation to provide developer incentives. A large portion of the funds raised need to be developer incentives. And if they are for needed housing that maybe isn't affordable housing, maybe there's 80 to 120% that they might pay a tax, but then get the, whether it's an SDC credit or something like that. So it is possible, but in most cases for affordable housing developments, there's, again, there's a list of certain types of activities that would be exempt from the tax.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, Mr. Buckley, I'm losing some of your words. I missed a couple paragraphs ago. The last of your sentence trailed off, and I have no idea what you said. And I would say, as far as the CETS go, I've had public input regarding them, that they need to be for extremely low-income and nonprofit housing. And I'm kind of in agreement with that. I don't think that developers should be able to turn around and get credits. I don't know. I just, I think it should be for extremely low-income and nonprofit, if you really want to do what you say you want to do.
Yeah, in your list of exemptions, you recommended an exemption for religious facilities. I don't think that we should be giving religious facilities a tax exemption.
I believe that might be under the state required exemptions, but I can check.
If it's not required, I would prefer we don't, but that's my own opinion.
Wasn't there something that said that religious organizations were supposed to handle low-income housing on their property somehow? Because if they do that, I think they would be entitled to some sort of benefit for doing that, unless I've misunderstood.
That's a different state law. That's House Bill 3115. That's not related to middle housing or.
Okay.
Right. They're able to propose to do housing on their property, but this isn't necessarily related to that. If it was affordable housing that they were proposing, then that would be, probably be covered under the exemption.
I was going to comment that I'm glad I read through the report and all the public input that was provided. And I appreciate the summary of the construction excise tax. It makes a lot more sense to me than it did at first.
Counsel, any other questions?
Could we get direction on whether you support the proposed percentages? Because this is your chance to say, you know, these are okay, we want to do something different.
Can you go back to the percentages?
Yeah. Beth, can you?
Where are these in relation to other cities? Are these on the low end, the middle?
They're comparable to other cities. 1% is pretty standard.
Yeah, 1% for both is really standard. Carvelast is 1% and 1.5% for commercial. And a couple other cities do 1.5% for commercial. BEN started this a long time ago. They have a smaller rate because they started this a long time ago. So we do have, in your background report that you received for the August 5th Agenda Packet, it had a list of cities and what their rates were. And I can look that up if you wanted to know a few more cities and what their rates were. We're looking at Newport, you know, other smaller cities having comparable rates.
I'm fine with these rates.
I am too.
Just want a thumbs up, or do you?
I think we're ready to move on to our next policy.
Tax abatements.
Thank you. Yeah, so the next policy under discussion was tax abatements. The city has had a tax abatement for low-income rental housing that's built by nonprofit developers. That program requires annual renewal and does not include for-profit developers of affordable housing. And so the programs that we have been talking about through this process is we've been looking at a different type of tax abatement for low-income housing. That's the low-income rental housing tax abatement listed here. The other tax exemption we've been discussing is the multi-unit property tax exemption that is for building multifamily housing in certain areas near transit. And so the idea of switching from your current program to the low-income rental housing tax abatement program is that that would allow the, that would allow for-profit builders of affordable housing, which is becoming a more common thing, to also participate in the program and get incentives. They still have to meet all the same requirements for the housing that they provide, but they do it on a for-profit basis. And so switching those to that tax abatement program would broaden the field of people who can participate and would also make the requirements a little bit easier on compliance for those who do qualify and take advantage of the program and they don't have to do the annual renewal. We heard that this is a strong incentive for affordable housing developers and that it can really make the difference in making projects feasible. And the groups had voiced broad support for going with these two programs, phasing out the current program and going with these. And we didn't really hear strong objection to either of these. Let me rewind. I'm sorry. We did hear some objection with the idea of changing the rental program to allow for-profit developers, but most people voiced support for that. So our recommendation is to go ahead and phase out the current program and replace it with the LIRHT, similar but slightly different program. And then the Economic Development Department, through this process, has learned a few things and gotten additional analysis on the multi-unit property tax exemption, but really, they would be coming back to you with more specific recommendations of what they would like for that program.
I'm going with Counselor Newton Azor. She was first up.
Hey, so I have a few questions. First, LIRHT. I understand it's a very similar program, and I saw the materials applicants have to apply every year. How is there going to be a limit on how many applicants or programs that we're able to sustain?
So the program that we're proposing is a 20-year tax exemption. It's one of the tools in the toolbox for affordable housing developers. And when we have an application, we would determine what their taxable amount would have been. So you're really looking at, you have vacant land that is maybe being taxed a little bit, and you're just looking at that increment, the approval increment of foregoing taxes for up to 20 years. And then they would start paying taxes again. So.
And then for affordable housing, how are we, what is the stipulation between what affordable housing is or low-income rental housing? I apologize.
So in this program, I believe it's 60% or below median income. If it's not that, it's 80% or below. It's set by state law. So we're talking about, you know, publicly-supported housing. These developments usually require state funding, multiple different tools to actually get off the ground. There were a few different examples in that report that we had in your August 5th packet, which is on the Housing Implementation webpage.
And then MPTs, is it going to be just for 10 years? Or are we having any graduated process in there?
The Economic Development Staff will be coming back to you with specifics on the MPT that the state law enables you to provide up to 10 years in a property tax exemption in exchange for public benefits. So there are public benefits that must be provided in addition to providing housing in areas where we want to see more housing development. There are different lists of public benefits, and I think the staff will be asking for your input on, do you want to prioritize the list of public benefits? So you're getting something for that foregone funding for either program.
I understand the Economic Development Staff will be coming forward to tell us more about MPTs, but do you know if that would be an application that's completed every year? Or is that once, and then they have it for the 10 years or whatever they qualify for?
Good question. And sorry for interrupting you before. They would just apply one time. And so rather than having to come back, which is a little bit of staff work every year for renewal, it would be, they would come to you for an application. Now, if at any point in time, these properties or applicants are not in compliance, then of course, things cease and we get the funds back. So, yeah.
I'd be interested in knowing more about the process on seeing if, like assessing whether the properties or programs are still in compliance and what the process would be for either working with them to get them back into compliance or ending it.
Yeah, well, that would be part of managing the program. And, you know, that, I mean, those are good questions, and I'll make sure, I'm taking notes, but that they hear your questions and are able to respond at that time when they come back.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I'll go to Counselor Smith.
Counselor Newton Azor asked the two questions that I was going to ask, and that was about the time limits for the exemptions. Thank you.
Counselor Monica, you have something? Counselor Novak?
Yeah, I can see changing to LIRHT, but I don't support it for for-profit developers, only nonprofit.
Counselor Kopczynski?
I'm good with what I'm hearing so far.
Counselor McGee? So my question, thank you very much, Counsel. My question about the LIRHT, I think that one should have to come back and be approved every year.
So.
That's definitely.
It's not set up that way in state law. I mean, we could look at providing you reports on a certain basis, but they do have to comply with the requirements for the time period that their exemption is determined. But I But I like the idea of reporting to us and they're already reporting to the state and we could figure out a frequency that works. It is a lot of staff time to, and, you know, contacting Lynn County for the exemption and it would be, it would be a little bit cumbersome of a process to do that every year. I mean, that's one of, I think, the limitations with the current program and why we don't have very many participants in that program right now.
Well, thank you for that. And what is the time of the exemption for the low-income LIRHT?
Up to 20 years.
Up to 20 years? I think reporting would be probably appropriate. I don't know, I would think like every election cycle, every four years. That's five cycles.
What about every two years, every other year as opposed to every year?
I think that's more related, that's too frequent, I think. If you do five years, it'd be four, it'd be four times they have to come back. Yeah, five times.
For reporting, Counselor Novak, not for reapplication, reporting?
Not reapplication, just reporting.
Well, to me, I mean, so it's, what we're saying here, what I'm hearing is that it's really difficult to report it every year, right? And it takes too much staff time or what?
No, I don't think she said it's.
What?
I think the part that's cumbersome is the reapplication each year for the exemption, but the reporting itself is something that they're doing annually anyway for the state.
Oh, they're doing it annually?
I don't know, the frequency, we can look into it.
Yeah, we could look into the frequency.
Can we find out and then bring it back? So we'll put on the same cycle.
They're maintaining compliance with those things with the state anyway, so there might be a way that they can use what they're already doing to provide some reporting.
Yeah, I mean, if they're getting a benefit, it seems like they could apprise us that they are in compliance. I don't think that's a big ask.
I agree. I think we all agree on that.
So it sounds like there's consensus that there should be a reporting requirement as a part of this tax abatement program. And maybe we can follow up with what that timeframe would be according to what they do usually.
Black thumbs up please, Counsel.
Could we do it for both, for both MPT and the LRT?
Does the MPT have to report to state?
I will have that added to the Economic Development Staff's presentation. You guys can decide what you want. And we will have reporting requirements so that, you know, those details haven't been determined. That's why we're getting your input. So good questions and I'll make sure that they have heard that, so, yep. Thank you.
In the case of somebody being, I'm sorry, Counsel, you got something? In case you have, say somebody is out of compliance, we can remove that benefit, correct?
That's correct. Yep, they pay back the taxes from when they're out of compliance, yeah. But anyway, the state has, for at least the affordable housing developments, not necessarily for the MPT, the state has, they monitor these projects. I just don't know the frequency of their monitoring. When I was on a nonprofit or the Albany Partnership for Housing and Community Development, they were monitored every couple of years or so. I mean, they look at all sorts of files to make sure that the incomes meet the income levels and these projects would be subject to those same as, yep.
I still kind of take issue with 20 years no taxes. That just seems, yeah, but they'll take it. If you offer someone, they're going to want the 20 years. I can't see someone saying, oh, it says I can have up to 20, but I'm good with five. I don't think so. I think if you say up to 20, they're all going to want the max. And I kind of take issue with that because everybody who's not part of this particular kind of housing is going to be stuck with every tax that these people aren't paying. And it doesn't seem really fair to me.
Isn't that something that we determine when they apply for this? How is the, like, up to 20, how do we decide? You get five, you get 10, you get 15?
You would decide that, you could decide that. I mean, I think we could bring back a minimum number of years and maybe there's a scaled benefit based on the scale of the public benefit that's being provided by that affordable housing. I'm not sure if any other cities do that. I mean, we say up to 20 years, but I mean, the state law allows for 20 years.
Thank you. Yeah, this is similar to the way enterprise zones work, isn't it? There must be a public benefit, certain number of jobs at certain number of salaries in exchange for a tax break. That would be the MPT equivalent of that, I guess.
Correct.
Thanks.
Please, move on.
Oh, I just wanted to touch base because one of our recommendations was to include both nonprofit and for-profit developers as a part of this. And I heard from Novak that you're not in favor of that, but I didn't hear broadly from the council if there, like, if there was direction on that.
I'm good with both, personally.
So, let me make sure I understand what you're asking. So it's a, what would that look like? A developer, is a for-profit developer, they make a profit off of, they sell the place? Or somebody else manages it, but it's low income and they're still making money off that? I don't understand.
Right, it's usually using a combination of a lot of different financial incentives, some from the state, you know, the tax abatement program, lift funds. And through that financing, they're able to still provide affordable housing and make a profit. I'm not in the weeds on how exactly they do that, but that's the.
I can speak to that a little bit. So the for-profits act like a nonprofit developer and they have to have those restricted rents for the affordability period, which is usually 60 years when they're receiving state funding. And those, they're monitored to ensure that they're serving those low mod residents. And in a lot of cases, they're serving residents at 60% or below in order to get the state funding. So the savings in the tax abatement needs to be put towards the reduction in rent over that time period. So, I mean, the public benefit is that we have more housing that is affordable to people. I mean, I don't know if that answered your question, but.
Yeah, and what I think I heard you say was not a lot of people are taking advantage of our current program, so maybe opening it up to for-profit could potentially increase the amount of people taking advantage of this.
Well, it could, we have very little affordable housing being built in Albany. And so you look at Corvallis, they have 435 units under construction right now because they have all of these tools in their toolbox. And we have one project that might get off the ground in the next year and 54 units in the first phase. So we're kind of competing with other cities to bring in builders of affordable housing. And they have to do every, whether they make a profit. I don't know if they eventually make a profit down the road because they own the property. I don't know, but their margins are really slim and I think they'd have to demonstrate the need for the tax abatement.
Counselor Smith?
I'm wondering how they, well, they're paying property taxes on the bare land already. There would not be, there would be the break in taxes on the improvements for a specified period of time while those improvements become populated with new residents who require city services. What's the give and take there? What's, how does that affect our ability to provide services to more people?
Yeah, I mean, those are things you have to evaluate when you receive those applications. I will say, just in looking at some of the memos for the Albany Partnership, who is getting tax abatement for the annual renewal type, I think total for all of their units and all of their properties, it's about $35,000 in taxes to the city. It isn't a large amount necessarily. You will eventually be getting taxes from the property. Again, if we need affordable housing, this is one of the tools in the toolbox that not necessarily everyone will ask for, but it could be a tool that makes or breaks a project for coming to Albany.
I'm pretty sure that Albany Partnership would not be able to charge their low, low rents if they had to pay taxes. And that's part of why I want to limit these things to nonprofit developers. I really do, I feel strongly about that. If they want to put up loads and loads of low-income housing in Corvallis, go, go to town. I don't, where I live and what I'm seeing done in North Albany, I am not a fan of further development in North Albany for sure. And I don't even want further development in Albany, I'll be straight with you. I think we are built out to the moon and I don't, I'm willing to cede some of these things to nonprofit developers, but I don't want to see low-income housing in every corner of the city, everywhere there is. And I know there's a big push and I am not in favor of it.
Counselor McGee?
Another question. You said that we're competing with other, like, people who are non, what, at what rate are we seeing, I guess, affordable housing developers? Are they being attracted to what we're doing so far? I, and, as a renter, I mean, the rent that I pay is extremely expensive and it goes up every single year. So to say that, you know, Counsel Novak, you don't want to see affordable housing in every corner of the city. I think we do need that. It's people living with folks that they, just to make rent. It's neighbor, you know, it's really ridiculous. And I think we should do something and we should be competitive in that way so that people want to move here and not only move here, but live here and work here and not just work to pay their rent.
I can speak to that, just.
The question?
Yeah, so I think that what we heard from the focus groups is that people are seeing a lot of success in other cities that have these tools and that developers that are building this sort of housing are gravitating towards cities that have those tools. And because right now we don't have these tools yet, they aren't choosing to build in Albany.
And we heard from nonprofit developers that this tool was important, that all these tools were important. Yes, and so, like I say, different, the way things are packaged, having multiple options to figure out how to finance affordable housing is true. And just, and we need to move on, but we have about 600 affordable housing units, publicly-supported housing units in Albany and there are 435 under construction in Corvallis and they already have quite a few. And we're the same-sized city, so, I mean, I do, if we don't do some of these tools now, we'll eventually be required to do them by the state. We're just trying to address our need.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll turn it back over to Brendan to talk about surplus land.
Thank you. So the third and final thing we wanted to talk about was the use of surplus land that the city might have or come into possession of. And the idea of basically setting a policy that says that such land should at least be sort of evaluated and screened for possible use as housing. So the, there was general support for this from the focus groups. Sort of, I think the response was sort of, why wouldn't the city do this? And again, nonprofit participants strongly voicing why this type of policy can be really effective if a piece of land is identified that's right for housing. So this is just a recommendation to make it a policy for the city to assess surplus land for housing suitability. Again, you would use that for housing that meets public goals, not just any old housing, but if you identified it as a good candidate, then you'd be looking for probably nonprofit developers or other types of developers who can come in and make it affordable or provide other public benefits that the city would like to see. So that's the recommendation. Again, this is more about adopting a policy going forward and sort of making it a stated priority.
Mr. Mayor, just to remind you, the last time you talked about this, it was acknowledged that this policy is really already, it's unnecessary because it already, that ability to do that already exists.
Within the current.
Exactly.
Counselor Monica has a question?
So we have a policy, do we have a, does that policy include a process for evaluating any applicants for surplus land as far as affordable housing affordability?
If you declare surplus, if you declare a piece of city-owned land surplus, you're just saying that the city doesn't need it anymore.
Right, so what I think you're saying is that we have a policy for declaring something surplus.
Right, you do not have this policy, but you can, if you have this piece of land that you would like to declare surplus, you can say, hey, we would like to use it for a housing development. You can use the piece of land opposite the Cala Puya Brewery as an example. That's city-owned right now.
Do we have a process on a policy or a process defining how we evaluate any applicants for those?
Well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be defining an applicant.
No, the process for applying and evaluating anybody that wants to buy our surplus land.
I think the city attorney addressed that the other night.
Did he?
On how the process unfolds or if we wanted to consider.
Well, I think he said, what Peter's saying is there's a, there's a process for looking at a piece of property and saying, okay, this is surplus. Now it's up for sale, right? We're gonna, we're gonna figure out what to do with it. But I'm saying, when that happens, do we have a policy or a process for people who are applying for these? Like, we need a fair way to evaluate those applicants, right? We get five applicants for a piece of property. Do we have a policy or some sort of guideline for evaluating those applicants? And deciding, oh yes, so this person, we're gonna use it or we're gonna like use it or sell it.
The short answer is no.
Okay, is that what this is then? Is that what this recommendation is? Is that we have a policy for that?
It is, but you still get to decide what you want to do. It just enables us to work with the different departments. I mean, we've had some surplus property, the example Peter gave over by Cala Puya Brewing Company. And we've had some parks properties. It's just oftentimes those departments will come to you and it just might be a more cohesive process. And if we know Habitat is looking for property or Dem Northwest, we might at least know that, hey, there's some interest in property. It doesn't mean the outcome will be any different than what you currently do, but we might be able to develop some guidelines for that RFP or other sale process. And you still would determine this on a case-by-case basis. This doesn't mean that all property would become housing, not all city surplus property is suitable for housing. It would just give a message that we will try to support you. It's a really low-cost way to support affordable housing development if it happens to work out that a property is suitable and you at the time decide, yes, why don't you see if any nonprofit, you direct staff to do whatever we want to do? And it would just clean it up a little bit rather than the uncertainty of going through the process. It may shorten the timeline. We could work with you on how to evaluate properties or evaluate RFPs, you know, if you get multiple applications.
Okay, I am in favor of that, thank you.
I can't see this happening very often because we don't have much surplus property that's bigger than a postage stamp.
Right?
But it's, I agree with the idea of having it in place if and when.
Yeah, I mean, a half acre, you can do quite a few houses, for example.
I support it. Thumbs up here. Thank you.
All right, thanks. I'm going to turn it over now to Anne to discuss the code amendment proposals.
Forty minutes or five pages?
So there's a timeline. We are planning to come back to you, I think, November 4th with some more details about these if we need to. We got some great input and we'll try to further refine what we put in your packet today and come back to you before we develop any enabling legislation or whatever. So we do appreciate your input. And with that, Brendan, do you have any other comments or?
I don't. Thank you for your time and yes, please follow up with any other comments or questions you have. Thank you.
So I do want to try to get you guys to your event this evening and we also have a planning commission meeting, so I do want to run through these.
So I do want to run through these as quickly as I can, but we do want to get your input on a few things. So increase flexibility for accessory dwelling units. We heard support from everyone about this. Currently, we have a maximum of 900 square feet or 50% of the primary house size, whichever is less. So smaller houses end up only being able to have really small accessory dwelling units. So we're proposing to just increase that to essentially 900 square feet or 25 square feet less than the primary dwelling, if the primary dwelling is fairly small. Any concerns with this?
Parking.
So parking is not required, and I don't know that it would, it would change anything. Most houses provide a couple of spaces of parking off-street, and don't know if it would change the on-street parking. But, yeah, we've heard about parking concerns, and we have some proposals to talk about to help incentivize alley-loaded development. Any other thoughts or concerns?
I like this.
Okay. All right. Okay. Just trying to move forward.
Sorry about that. I'll be on mic.
Yeah, my, oh, I think I have to, there we go. Okay. So the other type of housing we heard a lot of need for, especially in our work with the middle housing and the housing implementation plan, was just smaller houses. So you have already incentivized those a little bit by scaling SDCs for smaller houses. And now we are talking about, we're not getting very many of these built. We don't really have hardly any coming in for under 1,250 square feet. So we've heard that our lot sizes are too large, and that is why it doesn't work. So we have two different scales, similar to your scaled STCPs, to look at a minimum lot size that is about 60% of the standard lot size for houses now between 800 and 1,250 square feet. And then the second tier, about half of the current lot size for houses less than 800 square feet. And I mentioned that, and you see 750 here. But again, we had support across all platforms for this, and we had a recommendation that most people support, I mean, everyone supported once we mentioned it, to just increase 750 to 800 square feet just because of the dimensions of lumber and different plan sizes. We might capture some more houses around that size. Yep.
Will these smaller homes still have a backyard for children to play in?
Yep. They still have to meet the maximum lot coverage. And we have another proposal, two slides down, I think, to reduce front yards so that we have more space in the back. Yep. So these would be on individual lots. And, you know, there would be backyard space, so there's a setback requirement.
Thank you.
I wish this, when I built my house 20, 30 years ago, my front yard, I could put a 1,200 square foot house on my front yard.
You could do that in the, yep.
Yeah, I have a really big front yard.
So mostly support for this here? Okay. All right. So we've been talking about these small houses, and one of the proposals to ensure that we're making this work, it's not just a smaller lot size, but we also need a smaller side setback. And so again, this would just be for those smaller houses on the smaller lots, but also townhouses. We sometimes have an issue with, with the townhouses. So we're proposing to reduce the side yard setback. We heard support for this throughout the focus groups, but in the survey, we did not hear as much support for this. Maybe if we didn't took townhouse out of that, we would have a different, different amount of support. So we would love to get your thoughts and feedback on that.
Councilor Novak?
Thank you. Looking at the photo that you have here of these townhomes, and then you're saying to reduce the setbacks and reduce the space in the side yards, are these kids supposed to play in the street? Or does this have a backyard to it, these townhomes?
Well, those are, I think, just regular houses. Those are not in Albany. I just found a picture.
Yeah, I'm just asking if you're gonna model it on this.
Well, currently, we, we do allow these setbacks for certain types of development in certain zones. But yes, we would still have a backyard, and that is the next slide.
I have, I have a quick question. How many, we know how many families in Albany have children. Who in this council has children living in their home? Who has had children at their home playing in the last like three months? Two of us. Not a lot of people, I don't, is it the same stage of life as I am or that you are? There are some people, like one of my old neighbors who moved, Ron Green. He's on the planning commission. He used to live in a beautiful historic home with a great large yard. And he moved to something over on water, and he said, man, it feels great to turn the key and leave and not have so much to maintain. There are people at different phases of their lives. While I love to have a yard, I'm a huge gardener. You guys have been, foisted produce upon every single one of you. And I have kids that like to play in their backyard, and I have dogs. We also have the largest amount of parks per capita in the state of Oregon, our city. Like, I'm so proud of that, and I want to see us increase that. So I don't think that a backyard is a hindrance, even if it's a small backyard. Different people with different life phases want different things.
I'm just speaking out on behalf of the people I've heard from who want a backyard. That's all. I know everybody's in a different.
And there will still be homes with backyards.
Even not having children myself, I have nieces and nephews and greats, and they come over and they play in the yard. So that's why I'm asking. And I'm glad they don't have to play in the street, since I don't want them playing in the street.
Kids don't play in the front yard at all. Like, my kids, my, my kids might go out in the side yard and like pick some, you know, fruit or vegetables. But just because, you know, you don't want to get squished.
Yeah. Well, growing up, I had our little family home with three bedrooms and one bathroom that the six of us lived in. We had a front yard, a backyard, and a side yard, two side yards. I mean, we had lots of places to play, and it was great. And I hope that's still an option for people who make that choice.
It still will be. There are gonna be homes here in Albany that still fit that requirement. We're just trying to make a little bit more room for everyone to be able to live, live here.
And my clientele would love to have an option like this because they don't want to do the yard work. They don't want to pay somebody to do yard work. They want to live with their friends, have their families come and visit. And, and this is a lot easier to maintain for them. And I think a lot more of them would like to move from that paid-off home into something like this with a senior community.
Well, this is just for the side yards. We're gonna talk about the rear yard and front yard in just a minute. But the side yards, we found, even with the current setbacks of five and then six to eight feet, it's not really a very usable space. So could we put that space in the backyard and then enable larger backyards for whatever somebody might want? If, you know.
Your trigger.
Yep, exactly. Okay, so generally, support to reduce these for just these housing types? Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, we're talking about backyards. We looked at what other cities had for setbacks, and currently, we just have an interior setback. So the same side yard setback applies to the backyard. We're proposing to separate the rear yard from the side yards and, and have its own standard. But we found that our front yard setback is a little large. Again, we're trying to ensure that these smaller house types and plans on smaller lots work. But we thought this might be a benefit for everybody because that picture over on the right is actually in a regular, normal-size lot, and you can see how small the backyard is. So we think that, again, people will put the houses where they want to, but reducing that front yard and then requiring a larger backyard, most everyone, I mean, everyone we talked to, the developers, supported this.
That could be my house. I mean, my backyard, I could literally walk out, take three steps, and touch the fence.
So, so how big is a backyard, then?
Well, right now, the backyard, I'm not saying this is what people's backyards are, but most houses are setback at least 20 feet for some reason. I mean, we do have a garage setback of 20 feet because we need a space for the cars to park without hanging out into the sidewalk. The front yards, in a lot of situations, are much larger than the backyards. And there's, most people don't spend time in their front yards. So currently, the backyard setback, it's in the table here. It, well, actually, it's not. It's on the previous slide. It ranges five feet for one story and six to eight feet for two-story. We still have to have developments meet lot coverage, but we're now proposing to have backyard setbacks that are essentially 15 feet or 10 feet. And we think that will really enable people to actually have a backyard.
So 10 or 15 feet in back?
That's the minimum. You still have to meet lot coverage. I'm not saying that's what people will have, but right now, their backyard could be as narrow as five feet or eight feet. So we would now require more.
Thank you.
Everyone's okay with this? Okay. All right. So to try to reserve some space for on-street parking, and I should have shown you an aerial view with the driveway curb cuts, we were thinking, maybe we can incentivize rear-loaded development, which then the garages would be accessed from behind, and that would then free up the whole street for parking. And we've heard these concerns from people in North Albany with the townhouse development that there is not going to be enough parking for the, for the extra cars or for visitors. So this wouldn't be a requirement. This would just be an idea to try to incentivize putting the parking behind, or you don't have to provide parking, but putting it behind and freeing up the street for parking. And we heard support for this. Any thoughts or comments?
Coastal Crossing subdivision was developed this way. Any complaints about that?
I don't think so. I mean, I haven't heard complaints. I don't, I mean, the yards are a little bit smaller in the back when you're alley-loaded. But again, more variety of housing types and choices and yard amounts, I think, would be good. So again, it's not a requirement. It's just a way to maybe make things pencil and end up with a development that might be more acceptable to the neighbors.
A good place for a neighborhood party.
Well, I know that the North Point neighborhood has some alley parking. And I, I walk in that neighborhood on a fairly regular basis. And I, I actually was looking at the alley-loaded parking and wondering how these people leave their garage in the morning without hitting each other.
Must work. I don't know.
I don't know how they do that. I know, but he doesn't live in the alley part. But when you look at the alley parts, I was just there the other day, and I thought, how do you get out of this garage and this garage at the same time and not smash into each other? Because there's, there's not a lot of space. I don't know how they do it.
Yep. I mean, turning radiuses, if you have a really large car, may be challenging to get your car in the garage. I don't know.
Maybe I'll see who some of those neighbors are and ask them because it's worth noting on the council to see if people are like, no problem. Or if they say, yeah, you really have to be careful. I'd like to know. So I'll, I'll do a little asking.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other comments? All right. Okay. So encouraging cottages through the cottage cluster and, and smaller cottages. We haven't had an actual cottage cluster development go through yet because we've had some challenges, especially for infill properties. The tiny home village that we have actually didn't go through the cottage cluster process, if you're wondering. They had to go through a planned development. So we're trying to figure out if we can allow, what were some of the barriers possibly to, to this? So we did hear support from all of our engagement efforts, although the survey really only asked one of these questions, which I put the support by. But we're considering allowing more cottages per lot. I mean, you obviously need to have enough land to put the cottages on. But currently, our maximum is eight cottages per lot. And so depending on the zone, we would, we would allow more cottages. If they're small cottages. It's not just any cottage. So I mean, you, you may have some different thoughts about that. And then sometimes, the way the lots are laid out, having them all around one courtyard can be challenging. So we're proposing that you could do them around more than one courtyard. Again, it's still the maximum number of cottages per lot, and that's any cottage cluster development. And then there is a maximum size of 1,400 square feet for cottages, but there's a maximum average currently of 1,000 square feet, and it includes the average of any community buildings. We're proposing to remove community buildings from the average and increase the average to size to 1,100 square feet. So the footprint of a cottage can't be more than 900 square feet. Again, this is a tool to try to encourage smaller houses, but we thought we should, maybe could increase the maximum average. So we'd like your thoughts on that. And then for the really smaller infill properties, we've had some people come in trying to put cottages in their backyard, and the courtyard area requirements, it's hard to do more than three or even do two cottages in the back behind a primary dwelling would make a three cottage, cottage cluster. And we thought for just those smaller infill projects, we would reduce the courtyard, the common area requirement, from 150 to 75. Square feet per cottage. So any thoughts on, on any of these?
Yes, I'm presuming that all of these cottages, regardless of the size, would always all have the standard sewer, water, electrical hookups as we normally do in a standard build-out.
That's correct.
Councilor Newton, Azar?
My question is in regards to Albany Fire access. With the 75 square feet, is Albany Fire able to access? And if there's a fire or any lifesaving measures? I'm just trying to.
So the courtyard area doesn't affect their ability to access units behind. But, you know, they do weigh in on, on the projects, the larger projects. But, you know, sometimes they may require fire sprinklers in those cottages.
Okay. Good to know.
Councilor Newton, Novak?
Thank you. So someone who chooses to live in a cottage cluster like what we have on the screen here, they're also making the choice that they're going to walk everywhere they go or ride their bicycle. Is that correct?
No, that is not necessarily correct. You are allowed to have parking. So.
Is parking required as part of the, it's not, is it? There's no parking requirements anywhere. So why would it?
We are not allowed to require parking for.
Okay. So here's a question. Why would a developer, a low-income or nonprofit or a for-profit, why would they spend the money to develop this? I guess you'd, you'd have to develop it somewhere where it is walkable because otherwise, since there's no parking requirement whatsoever, whoever opts to live in these small clusters is going to have to have a way to get from point A to point B, and parking is no longer part of the equation, no matter what kind of housing we're talking about here. And I think that is huge logically.
Yeah. So I'll tell you that the draft proposals we've seen all include parking. I mean, the market still wants parking, and they're also providing parking. So all the proposals we've seen for cottage clusters provide some level of parking. It's not required, but people are still providing it. Okay.
Councilor Smith, do you have something? Councilor McGee? Councilor Absensi?
Okay.
Councilor Nathan Azar?
Okay. Okay. So we have a proposal to reserve our medium and high-density zones for those housing types. There's sort of a two-pronged proposal. And the first is to set a minimum density, my formatting got messed up, set a minimum density in the RM and RMA zones, an achievable minimum density. So you could do in the RM zone detached housing. RMA is residential medium density attached, and something you could do that's attached. This is one proposal that we received, support from the focus groups, and mixed support from the survey respondents. And then the second proposal, remove the maximum density limits in those three zones, RM, RMA, and then the high-density residential, and let the maximum heights and lot coverage determine the development scale. So we heard support from all the people that attended the focus groups for that. But then in the survey, there was not support to remove the maximum densities. And I will say right now that we, we have another issue in the code that we're addressing. It's hard to get to the. It's hard to get to the maximum density, but the heights would not change. So most of the, it would, it would still be the same building size and lock coverage. This may enable more one-bedroom units. Removing the maximum density and one-bedroom units are actually the type that we most need. So if you have a, a cap on density, you may be unintentionally limiting some of the types of housing that we need. So this is why we're, we're recommending that we remove that density cap. It's just in these zones, and, and let's have these zones accommodate the kind of housing that we intend for them. So thoughts or comments?
Councilor Montague?
I think this is a good time for us to point out that the focus group was intentionally diverse where the survey participants were lacking in diversity. So make sure that you take that in consideration when you are thinking about these results. I, for both of these, I think that, I think you're right. We do need more single-bedroom housing. And if this encourages that, then I am for that.
Councilor Kupcinski?
What I like about all of these options that you're giving to us is that they are just options. It's not requiring anybody to go to the maximum or, we don't have any proposals for any of these. We're just hoping that somebody will come along and do some of these because we, we have the need. So I like what, what I'm seeing so far.
I'm curious. I'll, I'll, I'll reserve my question for the end.
Sure. I concur with Councilor Kupcinski. Currently, we're really just seeing three-story apartment buildings. There are some other challenges with five-story buildings, for example, which would not fit in these zones. We might see some four-story developments. But, you know, these developments have to meet building code, and, and so construction methods change.
Councilor Novak?
Thank you. I, I don't want to remove maximum density. I am not in favor of that.
Okay.
I am in favor of it. I think it, the way you described it, it sounds like this is a problem that will solve itself.
We think so. I mean, you're not going to see an 80-unit apartment complex coming in necessarily for space that, I mean, if you have the same building height of 45 feet or whatever. So, and parking, people are still providing parking. We have demand for parking. That takes up a lot of a, a development site.
It would be impractical to cram as much as you could possibly get on a piece of ground and make it so unattractive that nobody would want to live there.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments on this?
I'm, I'm good with it.
All right. I, because the next ones, we do have a couple of, we'd like to get your input, anyway. So we've heard concerns about the private open space requirement, which are mostly your balconies and then patios for our apartments, our multi-dwelling unit development. So they also end up resulting in similar-style apartments all around town. But currently, we require 80% of those units to have private open space in the form of a balcony or patio. And we're proposing to reduce that to 50%. And we have another option for you. We also require more space for these areas. I think it's 72 square feet for the balcony and 80 square feet for the patio, reducing that to 48 square feet, which is what other cities require a smaller amount. Now, we've heard that from affordable housing developers especially, the cost of providing the balconies and the design, the construction, and then these parts fail more frequently. Maintenance costs are a lot more. And water leaks also. If it's an escape route, I mean, sometimes stuff is blocked with storage on these balconies. So we thought, well, let's provide some more flexibility. What others, now, in your packet, I talk about what some of our neighboring cities are doing. One way to approach it is, don't require private open space, but incentivize it. And that would be, so currently, we require 15% of the project sites for these developments to be in common open space. Most other cities have 20 to 25 and 30%. You, we could, you know, increase the common open space, and then you could use your private open space, if you provided it, to reduce some of your common open space. The other proposal is that we allow all of common open space to count, well, common open space to count for all of the private open space if you're providing sort of a covered area with some seating and at least a grill. Because we think that that's maybe what, in addition to storage, and people like to sit outside, and that if a development provided that and a grill, that they could reduce some of the, reduce their private open space. So we could get your thoughts on private open space in general. Currently, our downtown area zones don't have to require this. So we're proposing that, because we now allow multi-dwelling unit development in more zones, we need to add mixed-use commercial in our commercial zones. There's still a small common space requirement in these zones. But we don't really want to have obstacles to needed housing. So we wanted to revisit the balcony, patio, private open space. So we would love to hear any thoughts you have about that.
I have a thought.
Yep.
I spent over half my adult life living in apartments in Southern California. And I really appreciated my balcony. I really appreciated my space. And I don't think it's a great idea to take that out, quite honestly. I mean, if you have to live in an apartment, it should be bearable.
I, I concur, Councilor Novak. I do enjoy my balcony. I do enjoy my privacy as a, I do.
Most people who, who want to wave these things away have never lived in an apartment, much less for an extended period of time, like a lot of years.
Yeah. Well, I agree, yes, a balcony is something that some people like. I think that we can, you know, allow some flexibility for developers, knowing that the market will, you know, provide incentives to either provide a private, more private space or community. Some, some developments are, are better to have community open, more community open space than a private balcony. So I think that if we can provide flexibility, I think that, that would be a good thing. I like the incentivizing, the, allowing some of the private space go, to go towards that or the open space, the private space to go to the open space. I like that option.
I'm not sure if many people use open spaces like that. You move, you live in an apartment because you want to be in your apartment, for the most part. You're not out in the, in the grill area mingling with, that's not.
I can tell you, I never once went into any of those. I liked my balcony, but I never went into the shared space, and I never once set foot in a swimming pool. Too many little kids peeing in the pool.
And that's, and that's a real thing. That's real. As a renter, I can tell you, ain't nobody running over there in that little.
Well, that's really valuable input. And we aren't set in anything. Another thing we could consider is a reduction for affordable housing developments. I mean, if that's a real barrier. So we could, we could give this some more thought. And, yeah, it's really helpful. I mean, I've lived in apartments too, and I'm like, well, why wouldn't you want a balcony? But I could see some of the concerns that were raised by the folks that are building the affordable housing. So, so I think we'll work on this, and we'll lean towards keeping a requirement, and then that maybe a portion of it could be, you know, not provided, and we'll, we'll work on that. So, yes.
I have, I have one comment. So on Bren Prairie, Waverly?
Yep.
Waverly.
Yep.
Those back doors, windows have no gate or anything, so, no fences. And so as a, as a dad, if my daughter said, even though she's 27, Dad, I want to get one of these apartments, I'm like, well, get one upstairs. Because it's open to the public. You can actually walk by and see in people's homes, so.
Yeah.
Can we require some kind of privacy?
Kind of privacy. There are some landscaping requirements along the street, but we could certainly look at that, especially if the private, the, the, the ground-level units are abutting a, a street. So I, I agree with you. Those are a little, those are like townhouses, but they're really multifamily attached. And, yep.
I think about it every time I drive by there. I'm like, if I was a dad or, or a young man, whatever, it'd be a concern for me that somebody's looking in a window or standing at the back door when you open to take your trash out or whatever. That's just a real big safety concern.
But that's what the developer, the risk the developer takes in building something like that.
I agree.
As to, to Councilor Smith's point, that you're not going to develop something that isn't, that isn't market-driven, right? That, that isn't something that you think that people will rent or buy or whatever, right? So us allowing the market to kind of be flexible and allow other people's, you know,
Choices.
Choices to be, to be available.
Really good input. One more slide, and I want to, but, and we do need your input here, and maybe you'll need to come back. So, well, this was not a strategy in the Housing Implementation Plan. We did hear a lot through public engagement and with the recent developments that having some green space and open space is important. Now, we require this for the, the apartments, and maybe people don't use it. But a lot of cities require a little bit of open space with their neighborhoods, with their regular subdivisions. So with lots possibly getting smaller in neighborhoods, we thought that we might want to do this. And so if you like this concept, we have some things to work through. So how much open space? One way to look at it is to set a minimum amount required per lot, a small amount. I had in the development, I mean, in your packet, you know, maybe 50 square feet or 25 square feet per lot. And another option is to set a percentage of the net area of a development, like 3% is, I mean, no city has that small of an amount, but that, that's a possibility. So not, after you take out for roads and public right-of-way, you would then look at 3% of the area. And I had some more details in your packet about that. Then, well, what would need to be done in these areas? We just asked that one of those spaces be a small park, not requiring a play structure. We did hear concerns from some developers. If you have a play structure, that increases our insurance. What's happening now with our storm water quality requirements is a lot of developments are having to put those in. There are a lot of area, and there have to be homeowners associations now. So maybe that wasn't the case a while back, but it is now because of these areas needing to be maintained. So often, there are little remnant areas in land divisions. You know, it's not always a, a perfect rectangle or a square. So actually, the development community was in support of this in our focus groups. We had a couple of residential developers in these. And there was, again, concern about having to provide a play structure. But we would just propose a small pocket park, a minimum area of 400 square feet. And then the rest, we could be really flexible with. We could allow the storm water quality facilities to count towards some of this. It could be a walking path or a bike path that connects you somewhere. You know, it, not a lot. And then we were looking at, well, when, what, when would this get triggered? Some communities look at a minimum acreage. Some communities look at a minimum number of lots. Some communities look at a minimum number of units. But we, we looked at lots we thought would be better or a combination. So if, if you generally like these ideas, we would love some feedback. And then we, and everybody liked doing this, for the most part.
I like the paths about bike and walkways, especially if they're connected to other areas.
And, and that's what we would hope. I, I specifically put that in. But some people may want a little place to gather, you know, if they don't have. It, it might create more social opportunities or interaction opportunities. But, yep. Thank you.
I'm a huge fan of parks. Would these be part of our public parks? I am quite not a fan, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a fan of HOAs. I think that they can be a hindrance for a lot of people and for a lot of communities. Would these then be smaller pocket parks maintained by the city? And do we have the budget for that? Or?
These, these would be small areas that the homeowners association. Now, if the Parks Department wanted to take it over. So our parks are mostly, except for the original ones downtown, they're three and acres or larger or five acres. And they're often, you have to get in your car and drive to them. They're just not, except for us that live in downtown, we can kind of walk to some with our, you know, strollers and stuff. So the thought was, we do have a proposed exemption if you're within a certain distance of an actual city park or a school that is unlocked and available year-round, that you would not have to provide this. But, yeah, it's, I mean, we're, we're hoping to come up with something that wouldn't necessarily be this really expensive HOA fee monthly or annually. So.
I like the idea of a minimum open space area requirement with an agenda of like, if the lot, if the, if the acreage is a certain size, then add on a percentage. It's like, have that minimum, and then if you go over, then there's a percentage for that entire lot, if that makes sense. Kind of, kind of combining both options, one and two.
Yeah. I mean, I can, we, we can, yeah. That's an, there's some kind of complicating.
Like a weird formula.
Formulas out there in other cities. Like if lots were a certain size and had a certain area in their backyard, then you got to reduce your common area by a certain amount. But almost all of them had at least a bare minimum. And I will tell you, what we're proposing is a very small amount compared to what other communities require because we were trying to balance, we don't want anything to stifle development, but we do want to respond to community concerns about, well, is there going to be any green space? Is there going to be a place for me to walk my dog? Am I going to, I mean, while you might have more, larger backyards, I mean, maybe not with these smaller homes or in a townhouse development where you may not have much yard at all. So we're just trying to find a balance. And it's something that, you know, a lot of neighborhoods don't have a park nearby. And so it might change things.
So we're coming up on the 5:30 timeframe. What else do we have to go over?
That, this is it. If you have some thoughts, you can share them with me now. And we're going to get thoughts from the Planning Commission on these.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Smith?
Let me make sure I heard you correctly. New subdivisions being built from this day forward need to have an, an HOA as part of that development. Is that right?
Well, pretty much, and Matthew can correct me if I'm wrong, but because of the wat, storm water quality facilities and the management of those, they pretty much are. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would answer my question for who takes care of this open space if there isn't an HOA.
Yeah. And, and because of that, it made it easier for us to consider this now rather than before because, I mean, if you're familiar with the Riverwood Crossing development in North Albany, that storm water quality facility is, is 14,000 square feet of land. It's more than a normal-sized lot. So it's a fairly large area. Well, could we add some benches to that or a little bit of area right along the side so it becomes more of an amenity to the neighborhood? So. Okay. Anything else? I, I just, there was a timeline that we couldn't. We're going to be going to Planning Commission in November and back to you in January for adoption. I know that we got some public input. If we're able to come back and give you final drafts for thumbs up, we'll try to see if we can squeeze in onto a work session before Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.